We're going to make this available on the Resource Center website. That's www.co911rc.org. I'll be, once I have it up and running, I'll create an E N P study group page. Once I have that up and running, I'll let everyone know so that you can go back and re-watch any of the sessions that we do. And this is something that the Resource Centers wanted to do for some time is to put some E N P study guide resources on our website. When I found out that Monica and Debbie were planning on doing that, it just made perfect sense to all work together on it. So, I'm really glad that they're doing that. I hope you find the process of learning how to become an E N P as great a journey as I thought it'd be. Thanks.
Hi, welcome everybody. My name's Monica Money and I'm the Operations Manager for the Grand Junction Regional Communications Center. I'm also your second Vice President for the Colorado NINA Chapter, and I too am an Emergency Number Professional. Really what I'm going to introduce today is what is an E N P and why should you become an E N P certified professional? Really for me, it was about enhancing my career and gaining some plout, if you will, on my resume. In professional organizations, those kinds of certifications usually carry that kind of clout. So, we'll kind of talk through some more of these reasons why you should too be an E N P as we work through that introduction. As Daryl said, we're going to be recording these sessions. I may be preempting a little bit of what my partner Debbie Nasta is going to be sharing with you, but we're probably going to break this out into 15 one-hour study sessions. We'll be recording all of these on a webcast format that will be stored on the Colorado Resource Center website for anybody in the state to utilize. We're hoping always to have a live audience during these sessions so that we have that interaction with a work group. So, thank you all for coming. First up, what is an E N P? You know, certification tools are used by professional associations like I said to really add some meat and potatoes behind what it is that you do. It actually establishes benchmarks and performance for an association that says that you have the knowledge base and ability to work in that profession. And several years ago, when NINA decided to go through and develop a certification program, that's exactly the purpose behind this program. As my slide says, you know, demonstrates a mastery of their comprehensive knowledge. It helps raise industry standards. And I don't know about you guys, but in the last probably five or six years of being in this profession for a while, there's really been a concerted effort to try and raise the professional bar for dispatch, you know, to get us recognized as a profession and outside of that clerical realm that we have kind of been pigeonholed into for the last several decades. And then also, when you hold professional certifications, it's also about showing a commitment to your profession. So, all the very good reasons and all reasons why you should be an Emergency Number Professional. So, why should you do it? Again, about showing your commitment to the profession. For me, it was about self-improvement. It was about having that tick box checked, if you will, for my resume. If you do very much research on industry job searches, you'll start noticing that an E N P certification is being required in not just the IT portion of public safety management, but also in the operations management. They like to see that kind of balance in their operations managers to have the technology background as well as the labor laws and the, you know, what does it take to staff a comm center kind of information. And really, the other thing that the E N P certification has afforded me is a lot of opportunity to network. You know, it's a common, it's a common theme. A group of people get together for your likes, dislikes, your certifications, your profession. And this is just another layer of networking that is afforded to you through NINA. The first big thing, and some of our people in the workshop today have it in front of them, is according to NINA, you have to have, you have to be eligible before you can even take the test. And I'm going to run through those requirements over you. First, you have to determine if you're certifiable. So, you either have to have three years' experience in emergency communications or three years' experience with a commercial provider of emergency communications products. So, one or the other is your first hurdle. So, once you have three years in the profession, then it's an accumulation of 10 points that's based on experience. So, your working experience, you get two points with a max of 10 for each year past the three years. So, if you have six years' experience, you have one point for your three years, and then you get, can't add, somebody help me with the math. Then you get two points for every year after that. Does that make sense? You get, for your education piece, you get two points for an AA, four points for a B, a bachelor's degree, and then six points for a graduate degree. And then for additional points, you get a point for NINA in-person courses, and you can only have a maximum of four of your 10 points to go towards that portion of your point count. You can hold an office in a NINA chapter or national level with a max of one point in that category. And then any other professional certifications that you might hold, like the IAAD CCM certification would be worth a point.
CMCP.
And the CMCP, NINA CMCP course, that certification would be a zero point. So, after all of these accumulate, you have to get a total of 10 points on your application process that even determines whether or not you're certifiable according to NINA standards. Once you do that, once you determine that you're certifiable, if you go on www.nina.org, there's a lovely application handbook that's downloadable, printable. You fill out your application where you determine your certification eligibility. The fee for the test for NINA members is $420, non-members is $500. So, I encourage any of you who are not NINA members to save yourself the $80 and get your membership. But there are four testing periods each year annually. This year, the spring 2014, that application deadline to apply to test during the spring session has already passed. It was in March. But for the summer 2014 testing session, if you so chose to test during that time, that deadline, you have to have your application submitted to NINA by June 23rd. The testing period is July 19th through August 2nd. For fall, that application deadline is September 9th, and that testing time is October 4th through October 18th. And then finally, the winter 2015 session, application deadline is December 15th, and then the testing is actually in January of 2015, the 17th through the 31st. So, again, I think we'll have ample time with these 15 study sessions, and you may not need to review or participate in each of the study sessions. I will tell you that for me, the study sessions that we generated in my area really helped me learn the material and retain the material. The test is 150 multiple choice question test, and there are testings all over the country and all over our state at specific test centers. And when you fill out the application and you get approved to take the test, they'll advise you of where the testing center near you will be to issue the test.
Monica, there's several versions of the test. Everybody in here won't get the same test.
Oh, thank you. And my partner, yeah, my partner Debbie asked me to remind everybody, there are several versions of the test, and that is to ensure that each test taker gets a different version of the test, obviously to help people from copying and other things. Again, the NINA website actually has quite a bit of information on E N P, on the certification process and information. Right on the homepage of NINA, in the lower right-hand corner, it says, "Learn more about E N P." That's where you can find the application handbook that I have here, all the study material, practice tests. Everything is available. There's direct links. You just click on the links and it takes you right to them. So, really easy website to navigate through. And finally, talking about, again, to add on why you should be an E N P, and then talking about how E N P is in our state of Colorado. There's 74 E N Ps in Colorado, actually most of which are industry professionals, not necessarily comm center personnel. So, like our vendors, our support folks, those are mostly who the E N Ps in the state of Colorado are. So, we're really excited to have more comm center staff. We're going to begin hosting the webinars today, and we already talked about there'll be 15 different one-hour sessions, and we'll have subject matter experts lead those conversations on whatever that material is required for that session. And we are trying to prepare our professionals for the fall and winter testing sessions. So, our goal is to have you all ready to go. You ready for that? Maybe? And as we've already stated, all of the webinars will be recorded and available on the Colorado Resource Center's website for future reference because you might need to fall back and rehear the material again. That's how I learn. What else? I think that's it.
That's it.
Yeah. And now, any questions? Anybody online that has a question, or anybody in the room about why you should do this, how do you do this, besides getting right to the material?
Can I just say a word?
Yeah.
The passing grade, I'm just getting over here so that the camera can see. The passing grade for the E N P exam is 70%. When I took it, I took it because I was working for a PSAP at the time. My Board of Directors encouraged me to get a new certification. And I didn't know there were study groups out there. I didn't know there was a book of knowledge. I didn't know there were study guides, and I just took it cold, and I just barely passed. So, you will all do better, and you can go in with a lot more confidence than I did because you'll have some background, you'll have some studying and some material to fall back on in your memory because it is a hard test if you're taking it cold. But, you know, 70% is the passing grade, so when you think about everything that you learned throughout the course, you know, that's sort of the minimum gold that you have to have as far as retention of the material. And I think, are we ready for Debbie?
Sure. Yeah, one, just real quick before I pass it off to my esteemed colleague Debbie Nasta, who's the manager here at Weld County. There is a recertification. Your certification is only valid for four years. So, after four years, you have to recertify. And that doesn't necessarily mean taking a test. On the same NINA website, you can find the recertification process, and as is the requirement to qualify, to certify, is a similar process to recertify. It's a series of points based on training that you do throughout those four years, how you participate within NINA, whether it's at the chapter level, whether it's submitting articles to the publication, attending trainings, attending national conferences, state conferences, and other NINA-sponsored activity. So, and other education through other organizations, private sector education, there's other ways to get the points that you are required to recertify, and there is a fee to recertify. I cannot recall what it is.
It was 395. I have recertified twice, and I've never even come close to not having enough points. If you were active in 911, you will have enough points. You get points by teaching classes, going to classes, by being on the NINA chapter board. You can be, you can get points from being on a NINA national committee. You can get points for going to APCO, which is interesting enough, but going to APCO gets you points. And if you ever do any public presentations, like at public safety fairs or job fairs or anything like that about 911, those count towards your points as well. And so, you need, I think, 30 points total, but it's really fairly easy to get those points over the course of four years. And then, of course, you do have to have, come up with the fee, which is, it's not a small fee, but considering that it's good for another four years, it's not out of the range of what's possible.
Hi, so I am Debbie Nasta. I'm the Operations Manager at Weld County Regional Communications, and most of the students in the class are supervisors for WCRCC. But we have Lita, our neighbors, and we have Thornton, our neighbor to the south, and some of our board members from the Colorado NINA Board were here today for the board meeting, so they've joined us. And we encourage anybody to come and join us. We will be, as we get, as it was mentioned, as we get people that will come and teach because there are some subject matter experts all over the state, and Daryl is with the Resource Center equipment. It is the favor of getting this not only live, but recording it and posting it on the website. He can travel, and he will, if the person presenting cannot make it up here to Weld County or it's way too far. But we're going to try to concentrate it right here, because Daryl's next door, and we have a large amount of people in here. Let's see, we have five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13. And we want this to be interactive as we teach because we want people to ask us questions. Today really is informational. It's launching it, getting off the ground, getting you guys interested. We hope to have 13 back next time, or more. And if it's more, we probably will stay in the bigger room we were in earlier. But I became an E N P. I've recertified once, and I became an E N P as a challenge in that I was in San Diego County, and there was one E N P in the whole county, and it was a radio dude. And no comm center people were. So, several of us at fire communications managers meetings said, "We need to become E N Ps." We got eight of us, about 10, two had to drop out, eight of us stayed the whole course of study. And that's where I got the idea in the format of how to study in a group so that you're successful in your test. And we all passed in the middle of a fire storm, just like the one that's occurring right now in San Diego. And actually, NINA National was generous enough to leave a testing center open for us because they were, some people were holed up in the comm centers for a couple of weeks, couldn't even get out. And they left it open another week for us to test, and we passed. It is successful. It's what you put into it. There's people that, like Daryl here, was able just to go take the test, that may just look through the book. So, I'm going to show you the book. It's called the BOK affectionately, B-O-C-K. It's the Book of Knowledge. It is not completely online. You do have to buy it. It's $50. Yours are heavy. I've ordered them. And they're $50, which isn't much. So, if you're a writer and note taker, it helps you see how you progress. Everything is not in this book. This is, there's a major outline, which is what we're going to go through here soon. There's an outline of what's in the test, and not everything is in this book, but it's kind of telling you, giving you an idea of what you need to study. So, let's, for example, we'll get to the outline, but the human resources section will talk about some of the laws that surround your human resources in a supervisor's or as manager's, what you need to know. And the questions will come out of, an example question, and part of the training will be, I'll give you examples of the questions, is you, one of the, I can't even think of one of the laws right now, but is, here's, you know, the, give me a law from human resources.
Like ADA compliant.
ADA compliant, and they'll give you five questions, which one is correct, out of that law. So, you do need to know it. You need to know the gist of it, and what's, as a manager, supervisor, as a professional or industry, you have to pick the right answer, you know, 70% of the time to pass this test. So, the Book of Knowledge is just a gathering of professionals around the nation, and there's one of the, there's a workshop, you know, committee that keeps this fresh. There was a new printing, I believe it says November 2013 is the latest ballot. Does yours have a date? But they're always refreshing it, and as those of us that go through the testing, and we say, you know, "That question wasn't relevant," or "That question was confusing." You just feed it back to the committee, and they refresh it, and they're always refreshing their tests. So, it isn't always the same. The big question right now is how much of next generation 911 is in there? Because there are states in this nation that have already gone there. And so, that is part of their professional career and involvement in their state. Many states aren't there. So, that's something, as we go through the study, that I get to discover, is how much next generation 911 is in there and how much you need to know. Because the old way calls were delivered, is going away, but it isn't gone yet. And so, in your test, you will have some of this information. Yes?
Like a little.
Hold the mic closer.
There you go.
There's also books. Do you need to buy them? I think the NINA website might have these books. They sell them. These are NINA books. Like this one says, "E 911 Database Guide," and that's one of the sections in our outline. Do you need to buy it? No. Supervisors here, Mike Wallace has them in his office. We can borrow them. Some of them might be dated. We might want to look at the stuff that's more up-to-date and fresh on the website. But the NINA website's going to be your friend through the study because it has a wealth of information. I would also encourage you, if you're curious and you're looking to go to the APCO website because it too has a lot of information. So, how the exam is structured, we hand it out, and it's at the very beginning of the Book of Knowledge. It's the very first part of it, correct? I think the outline is. And let's go to the next. There are two major sections. One is 911 operations, the other one is 911 management. Now, you can just go through them slowly. There's, it's telling you, and on the outline, what percentage of the questions in the test will be on that subject. So, one of the things we did when I studied was, I was in the information technology world and human resources and some of the stuff, and the comm center weren't my strong point. So, what we did is we took, like Monica said, take something you don't know very well, go research of it, and come and present it to the class. So, we're not going to make you do that because we've done that homework for you, and we're going to present it to you. But we might need to go see some more up-to-date stuff. We may need to go check the laws up today. We may need to go, like I said, next generation 911 is something that was not on my test. So, we'll have to explore that and enhance our materials. So, what we do, what we want to do in each of these webinars, in each of these subjects, so let's go get public safety answering point up here. There's types of PSAPs. Some of you that have only worked in a primary PSAP don't even know what a secondary is or does. Does anybody know what a secondary PSAP is? So, law is usually the primary because, does anybody know why law is a primary PSAP? It's because the majority of the calls are law enforcement related, so that's why the industry has chosen that it goes to, your primary PSAP is your law enforcement. Secondary is either EMS or fire. And so, they're not getting the initial 911 call, it's being transferred. So, that's what a secondary PSAP is. So, those are the things you're going to have to know. And so, that's why it's up there, primary, secondary. And there may be a question on that on your test. Single jurisdiction, multiple jurisdiction, what does that mean? Co-located versus consolidated? What does that mean? And then you go into the equipment. There's an ANI controller, ALI controller, there's an alphabet suit in your test. So, one of the things in NINA website has a glossary for 911, and it's good to go research that, and we'll probably hand it out as a resource. So, what we'll do on our class, where we're talking about public safety answering points, is go through each of those and teach what they need. And so, we'll go, give you handouts, we'll go through it, we'll teach what you mean. We do want participation. We do want you guys to ask, hopefully have answers, and so that there's some interaction in the room. So, come our next session, and maybe not live online so that people don't have to sit here and watch us. Our first thing that we'll do is give you a test from the previous session. So, when we come back to another one, can you just flip to another slide, please, Daryl? Let's go to PSAP. Let's go to another one. One more. I guess now we're getting into phone information. So, when we come back, our next hour will be about caller location, wireless devices, next generation 911 framework. Before we jump into that, we're going to test you on the previous session on the PSAP information to see how much you retain, how much you study. And you can test yourself if you can. So, the test is for you. If you can't answer 50% of those questions, you know you have to study, and so that you can start retaining it. And really, E N P is all about using the knowledge that you guys don't know you have and you have it in your brain already. It's really stuff most, some of you that have been around for a long time already know. It's just, it's making you formulate, put it together, then answer questions. Sometimes when you're on the spot and you're like, "What's PSAP?" "Let me see, how do I explain that?" Well, this is just making you get that all together in your brain so you have an answer. I call it the elevator speeches. You know, what does a PSAP do? Do you have a three, you know, whatever it takes you to go from floor one to floor 10, do you have an answer in those 10 floors that you're going up the elevator? So, those are things that we're going to help you bring together in your mind because you probably know these things already, a lot of them. Some of you that are on the IT side will be challenged more on the management side, but those that are only been on the management side, supervisor in the comm center, won't know the IT side. So, that's where the IT people become your friends, and you study with them.
Just now.
Study with. So, this, we went through the whole outline, and we believe, like Monica mentioned earlier, that there's 15 classes. There's a couple of topics that we need to probably do in one session because there's SMEs that they don't know yet that we're reaching out to, that we want to tap them to come and present. And if these people come and present, it may end up being a two-hour session that we'll probably just tape in one-hour segments and put them up there so that if you're doing this online, since you're not here with us, that you're able to just say, "I'm going to commit this hour and watch this training session," and then come back and do the other hour training session. So, there's 15 of them. We're committing to do one every two weeks. Thursday seems to work, so most likely on Thursday. So, the next thing you'll see out of this group, which is Daryl, Monica, myself, is tentative schedule so that you can plan around it, and if you're going to watch it live, thank you for joining us live, by the way, if you're going to watch it live, you know when to set the time aside. Those of you that are going to come here, you know when to come and where that is. We would like to make it one location, but we may travel on some of it. We may even have to go visit Monica. All the way to Grand Junction during the line pistol.
Yes. Wait till there's no more winter snowstorms or spring snowstorms.
So, we can keep on going through, just to give you an idea today what you're going to be looking at. So, there's telecommunications regulatory environment, and that's a lot of stuff at the federal, state, municipal level that we'll have to delve into. So, our next one is, let's continue, you know, what is the FCC? There's special legislative areas. When we started talking about this, I said, "Who wants to teach legislation?" Because law is not my strong point, so maybe I should, but you want to be excited about what you're teaching. And I know Daryl is the person we're going to tap into. He's our expert in the state, usually at the Public Utilities Commission level. He's the one that keeps us up to date and is always involved in the legislation process. So, we've asked him to teach those sections. 911 management is, like I said, it's the other 50%. There was operations, there was management. There's the governance function, budgeting, purchasing. Now, budgeting and purchasing, developing specification, that varies from state to state. I did my E N P in California. Your 911 funds are controlled by the state there in California. Here in Colorado, they're controlled by the phone authority at authority level, which may be multiple counties, but in most cases, it's a single county, and that's where your funding is. It's funneled. And do you all know, and maybe someone who haven't even noticed, that on all of your phone bills, you pay a fee for 911? Has everybody looked at that? Have you noticed that? People that aren't in the 911 business, just they see a bunch of taxes, they don't know. They don't even know until, so as a 911 professional, this is where you get out there and you start telling people, "Look at your bill. Look at your Verizon, AT&amp;T, look at your Sentry, like bill. It has a fee, and it varies by county. It depends where you live. Weld County is 70 cents, but there's counties in the state that have as high as $1.25, correct?
$1.50.
$1.50. So, that money is funneled through their phone authority and spent. There are some state statutes on how that money should be spent. That's where Daryl comes in. He knows this better than I do. But it will vary by county how that money is funneled and spent. So, there's, no two counties in Colorado spend it the same way. There's some generalities, but not the same way. Let's see, what else did we have? Continuity and disaster planning. Oh, you might have to use that one. You did the NINA workshop. You might have to help us on that one. And that's something, us in our busy worlds, that we don't always plan. And will we have to leave our PSAP? Absolutely. There'll be a point in time, and it may not be as Absolutely, there'll be a point in time, and it may not be as, but if we leave, the people that follow us with a plan, that's great. There should be a plan that you should visit, um, you know, at least once a year. Well, let's start with getting a plan in Wild County, right? We have, we've moved, so we need to get a new plan in place, because this is another building. Um, let's see, what else do we have? Preparedness, response, recovery, all that comes into place. Health and safety, what are the human factors, the engineering and ergonomics, job-related illnesses and injuries, and then there's stress management, employee assistance. Um, there will be questions on each of these topics, that's why it's in the outline. If it weren't, if it's not there, it, it won't be questioned. But, well, I shouldn't say that, because there could be stuff that they could throw in just because you are a well-rounded person after you've gone through this whole outline and looked through stuff. So they may throw in something, 'cause I remember studying GIS a lot, because the outline has a huge section on it, and I needed to understand the difference between degrees and not lungs, and this and that. Studying it a lot, and I got one question on my test. And I remember spending so much time understanding it, but what happened after I studied that? I knew more. I got one question on my test, but I knew more for my job. So that's the whole point. You're gonna be very, very smart when this is over.
Debbie, if I may, this is a good example, this page right here is a good example of how the test has changed over time. When I took it, PTSD wasn't an issue, because nobody thought dispatchers could get PTSD. And now it's been shown that dispatchers can experience what they call, uh, vicarious peak, post-traumatic stress disorder. So that's now on the test, or it's, it's at least one of the, the potential topics for the test. So that's something that, um, you know, it just, it just shows that they, they try to keep this up to date, and try to keep it as relevant to your actual work, uh, your work body of knowledge as possible.
And that's why the book is called Body of Knowledge, is all, everything that we learn throughout our careers is part of what you know. And so that's why I say, if you may get one question out of this huge section, but you're gonna know so much more, and you'll be able to talk to Troy, because he knows GIS. Can we see another slide? Public Relations and Education, um, and that's a part that always falls short of busy centers, but we, you know, we all strive to do that, but there'll be something on that. Management of Employees, that is everybody, and what, one of the things that if you haven't traveled, um, the state, gone to other comm centers, or gone to other conferences, you think you're the only ones suffering certain problems, but when you start talking to your peers, those of you that have done the, what is it, CCM?
CMC.
CMC? CMC, you can tell I haven't done it. CMC, um, as you talk to your peers in those courses, you realize that you have similarities, right? So it's even become something that is part of the Book of Knowledge, and, um, we will try to not just be anecdote-related in the training, but what will you be asked in your test? So there's some sample tests on the NINA website that we will pull up and try to tack some of those questions. Recruiting, determining needs, selection strategies, how do you retain employees, and how do you plan for your succession? Who's gonna replace us as managers? So that's part of, uh, becoming EMPs, is that we want our internal people to replace us when we move on and/or retire. Training and Development is huge, and the state of Colorado is embracing that, and trying to, uh, put together some new training standards. Every PSEP develops and struggles through all of their training planning, and it takes a lot of staff hours, and so it's great that the state is pursuing this, and as a, a group is putting together some of the standards, so that we can plagiarize the heck out of it, and not spend so much time trying to develop our own materials, and then we get some standardization. So there'll be reasons why you do that, and other topics that we have to look into. Compensation and benefits, sometimes, as supervisors, what do you do? You come, you do your job, you leave, you come, you do your job, you leave, and you don't really focus on what, you know your benefits, you know your compensation, but do you really see what, how you've developed in your agency, and why you're attracting people or not? How are you gonna keep them? Something, that's something that as a manager, you're gonna have to know how to do and understand. So that's why that topic is there. Employee relations and labor relations, some of our agencies across the nation have unions. I don't believe they're really in Colorado, but some of the agencies across the nation have unions, and they have to know how to relate to them. You see, even Canada is up there, because, uh, they're neighbors to the north, and they also have emergency number professionals, so that's part of it there. So I think it's safe to say you all can ignore Canada, but we might wanna check on that, that it's not gonna pop itself up in your test. I'm, I'm pretty certain we shouldn't have to study Canada, but we might wanna check and make sure. Legislation, and there are some of the acts, I couldn't remember, Family Medical Leave Act, American Disabilities Act, Occupational Safety and Health Act. You'll need to know what those stand for, and what are the highlights of those acts, 'cause you're gonna get asked. And it's like, which one is not part of this act will be one of your questions. Compensation laws, regulation, Fair Labor Standards Act, these are things that you're just, should know as you promote in your career, and as you become a manager. Some of them, see, I can't even remember the names, so that says a lot of me, but, um, I kind of, you know, after using them for so many years, you know, you ought, you now know where you gotta steer away from, where this might step into some muddy waters, you're ready. So that's why, as you develop and as you study these acts, now you're gonna have pieces of it in you, and you're gonna know to stay away from certain areas that might get you or your organization in trouble, if we violate some of these laws.
That's it.
And that's it, and as I said, it is in the BOK, and you guys have it as a handout, and you can ignore our scribbles, that was Caroline trying to figure out how many classes we needed to put together, and that's our goal. Um, so it is gonna be about fifteen classes, and we do this every two weeks. Math person, Michael?
Seven and a half.
Seven and a half months?
Four and a half.
Four and a half months. So that's why if, you can go off on your own and study, and feel prepared, or you can go cold turkey like Daryl did here, and go take your test, you can probably take the fall test. Um, there's even one coming up in August. But our courses will be done for the spring testing, and we wanna hear back from anybody in Colorado if this helped you pass. And, and now that they'll be taped, they'll be available for the next cycle of 2015 testing for another group of people. As you become EMPs, start selling the heck out of it, encourage people to do the same thing you did, and become EMPs.
I, I just wanted to point out a couple of things, uh, that, that Debbie's presentation kind of brings home, is that this is an extremely well-rounded, um, body of knowledge that the EMP exam tests for. So if you have an EMP certification, shows that you have knowledge of human resources law, of general management principles, of telecommunications law, of telecommunications, and specifically 911 technologies. So it's extremely well-rounded, and by the time you go through all of these courses, you're going to have a basic knowledge of all of those different areas. Uh, and the other thing I wanted to really stress is that we are going to bring in subject matter experts for these different areas. Uh, so, you know, it won't all be, it won't all be the three of us, especially for the technical areas, I think, I think the three of us could probably agree, uh, you know, we'll bring in some people from, possibly CenturyLink or Toronto, we have some people that, uh, that we have in mind to try to tap for those subject matter expert resource, uh, sections. Uh, as well as the, uh, human resources, we talked about bringing some, bringing in human resource.
Director of Human Resources.
Yeah, human resources, uh, experts to come and, and talk about that section as well. So you're gonna be hearing from people who really, really know the specific area, uh, that we're going, that we're going over in each individual, uh, session. So I just wanted to bring all that, bring all that back up to the front.
So we've been talking a lot, any questions? Any questions? Y'all know what you're getting into? You still wanna get into this? Somebody said no back there, who was that? So, um, I think, uh, you will receive a lot of satisfaction from achieving this. I call it the master's degree of our profession. Um, it's not, you don't have to spend sixty thousand dollars to get it either, so that's, that's a good thing, you have to pay for a book and a course.
How many tries at the test do you get?
You actually get a pass, no pass, and you have to repay? I don't think you can go back.
I don't think so.
But there is a practice test that you can purchase, I think we can purchase a practice test for a hundred dollars. So it lets you go through it and get an idea, and then see where you fell short, and then you can actually now do the three-twenty?
Yeah.
To do the test. So, um, I think it's pass/fail. And it is out of, it's in a testing facility, it's pretty sterile, it's on a computer, and all you can take in is a piece of paper and a pencil, and your brain.
One of, one of the interesting things to do concerning this, to see whether it's something you think is important to you or not, go to the NINA webpage and look at their jobs board, and look at some of the jobs on there, and see how many of the, uh, the supervisor, all the way up through the manager positions, as well as, uh, jobs with the, uh, the technology vendors, either require EMP certification, or, or listed as a preferred qualification. I think that, that it, it's grown quite a bit over the last few years, it's really become kind of a, a standard requirement for a lot of, uh, high, higher-level positions in, in 911.
You know, for some of you, you know, initially looking at the brush of this material, it's a little overwhelming, because as Daryl pointed out, and through Debbie's outline, you can see, this is a really well-rounded, um, scope of information, and it's a little intimidating at first. I passed on the first go. And I have to tell you, I just am not encouraging this kind of study habit. I, I reviewed the labor laws, and my, like I described earlier, my challenge is technology, so I focused my studying on the technology part of the material, and I passed it the first go. Because as Debbie talked about, we have all this information in our head, it's sometimes we just don't think we know this stuff. And, you know, when people formally put it out in material, and ask you a formal test question, you're like, "Oh my God, what is that? Oh yeah, that's, I know what that is." So you, we're, we're doubtful sometimes of all of the knowledge that we do have, but, um, it's not, don't let it intimidate you. It is a lot of information, but it is a very well-rounded bit of information, and really makes you appreciate what we do, what we have to know to do our jobs, and then makes us more qualified to do our jobs. And are we planning on then doing our next session?
In two weeks.
Two weeks. So what date is that, do we know?
And we'll have to put a calendar out, so the students are... Anybody have a date?
Twenty ninth.
So May twenty-ninth at one o'clock, uh, will be our next session, for those of you that are online. Uh, and I'm not sure yet what that topic will be, but geographically, we'll be located here at the Wild County facility, at, uh, fourteen oh one North Seventeenth Avenue, for any of you out in the Great Big White World.
Fifteen fifty-one.
I'm sorry, excuse me, fifteen fifty-one North Seventeenth Avenue in Greeley, um, for any of you that wanna come and do some in-person study. Um, and we will be posting the schedule up on the Colorado Resource Center's website. Um, and as we solicit for subject matter experts to teach the focus of those study sessions, we'll be posting their names online, along with what the session for that two-week period is gonna be.
So by SMEs, two oh five. Those of you that are going to be curious and are looking at this webinar, and you are a subject matter expert, contact Monica, myself, or Daryl, let us know what your field of expertise is, especially if you're passionate about it, come teach it, because that's where it gets across best.
And we wanna get all of your email addresses before you leave today, so that I can notify you as soon as this, the materials are available online, um, as soon as we have the, um, the course, um, breakout, topic breakouts. We can add to that list as we go along, 'cause I'm sure we'll pick up more students as we have these sessions.
If you're not on the list, add yourself.
Do we get the online folks?
We have Jim Zimmerman, I've got his email address, and...
Carmen Jordan.
Carmen Bloom.
And then Val needs to sign, there's a couple people in the back that might have to sign. But if there's no questions, you guys are good. We'll see you back here in two weeks, and then we'll see you again in two weeks, those[1784.63]